Very good. Thank you very much. Bang the gavel, the Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a forum?
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
United States, must have.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. If everyone would please stand wherever they are at, and if you have a flag, if not, please, I have a flag in the background, please rise and ask Councilmember Warren to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and good afternoon. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of the closed session?
There's nothing to report out at this time, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Then let us begin with the consent calendar. Are there any items either Madam Clerk or members of the city council who want any items either removed or discussed separately in the consent calendar?
There are no items to remove, but I do have one caller in the phone queue.
Okay, let's hear from that caller, please.
Thank you. Please patch the caller in. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Eric Bauer. I wanted to address the city council on item number seven on the consent calendar. That's the funding for the DSP. I'm no longer a docent at the California State Railroad Museum, apparently due to input from your city partners, but I'm concerned that downtown Sacramento Partnership, some of the funding they get, $700,000 worth, might be diverted to plan to rip up all the tracks under city control in Old Sacramento. And that's, it doesn't really, I can't really spot where that would be in the budget, but I know that they've been complicit in that in the past. I guess that project's on hold right now due to budget constraints, but that's very much a concern of mine. So thank you, and I'll yield the remainder of my time.
Okay, does anybody from the staff or a member want to address the caller's question?
The caller has hung up.
Okay.
Mayor, I would just say since that's in my district, I think that's a misunderstanding of the waterfront project that you're leading and the cooperative effort between our city staff and other partners. The contract before us is really just for Old Sacramento maintenance, garbage, graffiti remediation, all the other stuff that the city used to perform, but now we've asked them to take over for us in a prior year. And I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay.
I have a comment on the consent calendar, if I may.
Yes, please, council member.
Yeah, I just want to comment on number item 18, and I just want to say thank you to, congratulations to YFC, and thank you for really including the youth development framework in the grant application that they did. And congrats to Member Carr for something going into his district. I think it's over $700,000 for a youth program.
Terrific. That's great news. Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Chenier, for.
Thank you, Jay.
To insist that we have the right kind of standard and framework for how we invest in youth. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Will you reiterate for me who made the second to the motion?
I'll do. I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
I don't know who did the first.
It's a motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Chenier. Councilmember Ashby? Councilmember Ashby?
Mindy, I said yes. Your volume's really low.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Thank you all very much. The consent calendar passes unanimously. Let's go to item 20, which is a call-up for city council review. Who's presenting on this? Mr. City Manager?
Christian, are you on the line here, or is it going to be Evan?
Hello, Christian Svensk.
Thanks, Christian.
Okay, it's a little bit difficult to hear you. Good evening, council members. Christian Svensk, Senior Planner with the City of Sacramento. I'm going to provide a brief background on project files, E18-101, 4500 Pell Drive. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for cannabis production to cultivate cannabis within an existing 60,000-square-foot warehouse in light industrial zone. The project site is surrounded by industrial development on all sides, with the exception of the east side, which is bounded by single-unit dwellings. The site is to the west of a residential neighborhood, but it is not within 600 feet of a school, neighborhood, or community park. The project was originally approved by the zoning administrator in January 2019. The project was then appealed by the adjacent property owner to the north. Shortly after the appeal was received, District 2 requested the item be called up. Staff advised the council members' office that the item was still under appeal and would be available again for call after the planning and design commission's decision. The item was brought to the planning and design commission on March 28th and continued to April 11th with a request for data on the square footage of cannabis CUPs in the proposed project's area for comparison purposes with the southeast area in District 6. It was shown that the area of interest in District 2, i.e. the Robla Park area, had a ratio of just under 7%, 6.9% of cannabis production to the allowable building square footage. This was a bit more than half the amount in the southeast area of District 6, which is at about 13%, 12.9%. The item was then continued to May 9, 2019, and denied by the planning and design commission. After this decision, the project was called up by the District 2 council office. The recommendation in the report today is to deny the entitlements to establish the cannabis production use at this site. This recommendation is consistent with the action by the planning and design commission. However, should the council want to support the cannabis production use, staff has also included the original approval from the zoning administrator. A motion could also be made to approve the project per the original findings and conditions of that approval from the zoning administrator hearing that is an attachment by the report. This concludes my presentation. I'm now going to hand it over to the applicant, who can further describe the project details and improvements to the building. Kevin or Melissa?
Hi. Can everybody? Hello?
Yes, hello, Ms. Chenier.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and staff. This is Melissa Sanchez. I was trying to share my video, but I don't know if I have the power to do that.
We hear you very clearly.
Okay, great. Mindy, is there any way that I can share my screen, please?
You should click on Share Screen at the bottom, select your presentation.
Got it.
And click on Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Everybody seeing my screen? Yes, okay. So I'll be really fast. I know that we have much more important things to get to today, but I just wanted to make a brief presentation on the planning aspects of this application. After me, my client, Brian Mitchell, who is the president of SKEZI, which is the group that is seeking to put their business into this building, will also have a very short presentation. So this is a little bit about the building. It's about 60,000 square feet, and we are applying for cannabis cultivation, though we do want, our goal is to add manufacturing and distribution as well after, if, should this be approved. Here are some photographs of the site. Here is an aerial of the site. We have a building to the north, and we had, in our original packet, we had talked about putting, or using the driveway to the north of our building, but per some comments from our neighbors, we've agreed to use the south section instead. I won't go back over the undue concentration. Mr. Svensk already went over that. We don't believe there's undue concentration. We believe the land use is consistent with the zoning code and that it will be a great addition to the neighborhood. And that is all for my presentation. And Brian, are you ready?
I'm ready. Mayor, council members, thanks for your time today. I'll try to keep this brief as well. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Give you a little bit of background. I'm the CEO of The Shrine Group. We are one of the largest vertically integrated cannabis operators in California. We operate throughout, everywhere from Humboldt all the way to Los Angeles. I'm actually fairly close to Sacramento. I live in Fairfield. I have been working in buying buildings for cannabis in Sacramento since before they started the CUP process. A little bit about The Shrine Group. We are unionized through the UFCW. We're also one of the first cannabis companies in the industry to offer an employer-funded pension fund. We currently employ over 600 people throughout California. In every community that we operate in, our goal is always to create, you know, economic development, to create jobs, and to, you know, create good partnerships with the community and the different organizations in all the different areas that we operate. This map gives you a little outline of where our different facilities are. Currently, our main two hubs are in Oakland and in LA, where we have our main distribution, manufacturing, and cultivation hubs, but we also have a number of retail locations that are spread out throughout California. And then we also have outdoor cultivation in Humboldt. So when I bought the property in Sacramento a couple years ago, the goal was really to, you know, apply for cultivation, do a large-scale cultivation, and then ultimately apply for distribution, manufacturing, and even delivery. Obviously, today, the focus is really just the cultivation, but I've always seen Sacramento as a very business-friendly city, and that's why we were looking to kind of make that our North Cal hub. A little bit about some of our assets, as Melissa mentioned, the brand SKEZI, that's one of our main assets. It was recently said that it was the number-one brand of cannabis industry by her intelligence. Safety is our number-one priority. I think, you know, Councilmember Warren probably knows this, that whole area on Pell has seen a tremendous amount of crime, you know, including our building, the neighbor's building. You could just go up and down the block, and you'll see boarded-up buildings left and right, and it's a huge burden on the property owners, the tenants, and the city. We've met with, you know, the inspectors from the city to collaborate on getting things fixed up, but I think it's somewhat proven, at least where we've been operating, that whenever you have a good business in place that has safety protocol, it usually helps out not just that property, but the neighboring properties. Our safety protocol is typical with any other top operator. It's a combination of using human resources as well as technology in adding like light and stuff like that to make sure that we have a safe space for our employees and for the neighbors. Good neighbor policy is always very important. We have a community liaison whose cellphone number and email is always provided to all the people in the community. We created a culture of compliance as required by the state, and, you know, it's really important to us because we retail a lot of our own products in our own stores, and we also sell products to over 90% of the dispensaries in California. I think one of the things that has always been a focus with this project on Pell for me is really the economic and workforce development. We see this as a place where, you know, not only can we create roughly, say, 50 jobs, maybe more in the future, but we're going to use a portion of the space for a business incubator. We actually did the same thing in LA at our hub there, and we even partnered up with LA Trade Tech College to where we offer classes at our facility in LA, where if people want to work in cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, or even in retail, they can get real-life skills, and they can actually get class credit at LA Trade Tech College. Our goal would be to partner with a local college in Sacramento and implement the same program. Community benefits, that's actually a picture of the Railroad Drive Homeless Shelter, which we worked with you guys on, and a number of other organizations throughout California that we've worked with. Melissa already kind of showed the proposed location. It's actually 64,000 square feet, but the CUP was for 59. I think that it's going to generate a significant amount of tax revenue, a significant amount of community benefit, and a good amount of jobs for the community. And that is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Does that finish the presentation?
It does.
Okay, I want to turn it over to Councilmember Warren, whose district this project resides in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there opposition people waiting in the queue? If so, I would prefer to hear from them and then follow that.
Okay. How many, Madam Clerk, how many people are on the phone ready to speak on this item?
I have the appellant on the Zoom call, and who is ready to speak, and then I have one person on the phone queue.
Very good, of course.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. I just got a text from one of the people who opposed that said that there are 20, there are people trying to call in on item 20, and that it says that the comment has been closed. So if Mindy could address that, there are just some people trying to call in who apparently can't.
Thank you.
For what it's worth. Yep.
We will check that queue.
We want to make sure that we hear from the community here, so if there's a technical problem.
I have the appellant on the phone, so Ms. Spencer, would you like to speak first?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity. And I would like to also comment, just real briefly, that I tried to call in myself to get my son in the queue because he wished to speak on the issue, and it says that it's, the comments are totally closed.
So, Madam Clerk, let's make sure we do want to, I mean, this is a different circumstance, not the issue itself, but just meeting via Zoom and people calling in to comment. I think we want to make sure that people are calling in, that they're not cut off just because the item has already started.
Our IT is checking on it now.
Okay. Good, Ms. Spencer, go ahead.
Hi. So, good evening, council members. My name is Lindsay Spencer, and I have my father, Brian Spencer, here. We relocated our family business from Lincoln, Nebraska 20 years ago. And so, you know, we definitely pride ourselves on being hard-working Midwesterners. We focus on the job, want to get stuff done. We have had to kind of make our voice be heard with this situation due to, you know, some concerns that we have, the first being economic impact. We have to maintain a drug-free workplace due to FAR 23.5, if any of you are familiar with Department of Defense contracts. You know, it's also, we're concerned about environmental impact to the whole community and also to our business here. We also are very concerned about safety. If any of you are familiar, Pell Drive is a one-way in-and-out street, so if you have to vary your route due to, you know, the bad gang members at the corner, whatever, trying to cut you off, there's no way to vary the route. We feel like District 2, you know, they've been working since 2016 to get caps in the area, so I really think this conversation should be about caps. It's not about something that, you know, had three public hearings through the Sacramento Planning and Design Commission, you know, deep community support, dozens of speakers, a whole grassroots campaign. Brian, you had something to add?
No, go ahead. And then from that, the, say, the planning commission upheld our appeal, and, you know, we're looking forward to a long and hopefully very prosperous business relationship in Sacramento, but we are very much concerned about our, the majority of our business is with Department of Defense contracts, and there's no telling what would happen if we have, if we have any issues with that, even though.
They have every right to pull a contract and prohibit us from getting future contracts. So after 20 years in Sacramento, you know, we would hate to have around 30 to 50 employees have no workplace to go to.
Yeah. So, so we're kind of caught in this thing where we've been here for 20 years, and it's like, we're, this other business is being shoved down the throat of all of the people in the Robla District 2 area who have come out in, in support of our appeal.
So, I mean, we're not opposed to having cannabis in District 2. We're, we've spoken up because this is a direct impact because it's right next door to our building. We have not opposed any other locations where we've received notices.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, otherwise?
Well, I do.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to questions, can I remind callers, the phone number is 916-808-7213, and then you dial option five for this item. Okay?
Thank you.
And the queue is working.
Thank you. To the Spencers, I do have some questions. Maybe some other colleagues do. As I heard your testimony, you are concerned that you may lose your business if the DOD were to pull out because of cannabis. I mean, we approved this application. A couple of questions. Number one, well, several, have you asked the appropriate representatives of the DOD whether there would be any impact on your business if we approved this? Number two, have they said anything to you, even unsolicited, about some risk to your business? And three, there are other cannabis businesses in the, in the area, and so if what you're concerned about were to happen, wouldn't it have already happened?
Okay.
Okay, so the answer to the first question, yes, we've received information from our customers saying that that is a major concern to them. In terms of proximity to our business, this, this building is how many feet, you know, from our property line, it's about 10, 15 feet?
It's adjacent.
It's not only adjacent, but our property line is right there. And then, so the other CUPs on Pell Drive are not close enough for there to be concern from our customers.
What did the, how did the DOD communicate with you, and what exactly did they say? Was it in writing? Was it a phone call?
We've had all these conversations via phone.
And who called? Was it a California representative of the DOD? Was it somebody from the Pentagon itself? I mean, in other words, I believe you, but in, as we are weighing this impartially here, how serious of a threat this is to your business is actually a very important question to answer. So we need to know whether or not this was, I mean, there's a difference between, well, you know, we don't like this, we're concerned, versus we are going to pull your contracts.
Okay, so the conversations have been with, with the buyers at, at the companies that we work with. Our contracts are with large aerospace contractors like General Dynamics, Newport New Shipbuilding, Boeing, and, and those buyers are the ones that we've talked to, okay? And we've also asked them to put in writing a statement about, about what we're talking about, and which they have, they're concerned about doing because of, because of their liability. So they're saying, you know, we're concerned.
It's not the Department of Defense. It's, it's a couple of the companies that work with the Department of Defense.
But, but these are all Department of Defense regulations that we have to follow. They're all flow, it's all flow-down from, from the DOD. So it goes to General Dynamics, and they have to follow these rules, and it passes on to us.
And what is the regulation that's being cited, and has our city attorney reviewed that regulation?
As far as 23.5, I have no idea if he has or not, or she has. But it states that.
We don't know if the city attorney has reviewed that.
We have no idea. But, but basically, the statement or the regulation is that we cannot have drugs on our property.
And by drugs, it's any, you know, federally Class I drug, and as of today, you know, cannabis is still considered a Class I drug.
Yeah. Now, as far as, you know, the, basically, this is a statement from one of our customers, is we expect our suppliers to maintain a workplace free from illegal use, possession, sale, or distribution of controlled substances. And as far as, as far as the federal government is concerned, marijuana falls as one of those items.
Okay. May I ask more, but let us move on. All right, we have now three callers in the queue. According to the city clerk, why don't we hear for those callers? We'll then turn it over to Councilmember Warren, and then have a council discussion.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, so you want me to go now?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Malachi Amen of the California Urban Partnership and the Institute for More, calling because our network has a concern about this particular project, as well as opposition to it for a number of reasons. One, because we're looking again at yet another expansion of cannabis businesses and granting licenses, particularly at a time when there is civil unrest in our city and across the nation, and these licenses, the CUPs, are, are going through new areas for expansion, are going through, with no respect to how core program participants are intentionally included in these projects. And not only is it, is it incredibly offensive, but we're looking at yet another 60,000-square-foot building going into an area that was deemed to be most impacted by the war on drugs, according to the city's own social equity analysis, and we're seeing no intentional effort to include core program participants, and it's just unacceptable. We should be looking right now, because of what we're going on, in terms of the maturity of the core program, we should be looking now at exclusive licensing for core program participants, or having those licensees applying be intentionally working with core program participants. And because that is not happening.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you please make your final comment?
We're opposed to this project for all of those reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Malachi. Next?
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay.
Please turn down the audio that you're watching the meeting on and make comments to the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Starting now?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name's Christine Spencer. I'm the owner of Olympus Sports Coliseum. I'm the owner of Olympus Sports Coliseum. The people that were, that are, that have the, the partner, that are trying to get this CUP through, they bribed us for $50,000. We turned them down. We are not, you know, we're opposed to this. Our building now is right next door to where they are. And so we don't want, we have kids coming and going all the time, and having kids coming and going, and having cannabis right next door is not acceptable. Approving this would, would make it so the kids have to walk right by. We also have, Natomas Unified uses the facility. Um, Natomas Unified, Robla Unified, and Twin River Unified all use our facility as a place for their kids to go and do sports, training, and leagues. And this is just unacceptable that, that you guys are allowing this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Please make your comments now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to make comments. I'm trying to listen to the meeting.
You can watch the meeting on our website. This is to make public comments. Do you have any public comments on this item?
No, I don't. I just, I don't know how to get on the website. I've tried.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Xander Spencer. As a Spencer, drugs are impacting my family's business. City Council, we need a chance to show you what is happening. You need to look closer, not just from your seats. There is more happening in the world. The decisions you are making are impacting lives in the Robla community in Sacramento. I do not support a cannabis facility at 4500 Pell Drive. Vote no on the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Please make your comments. You have two minutes.
The Robla Park Community Association has been active for nearly 20 years. When recreational cannabis became legal in California, all members met to discuss how this industry, industry would impact our neighborhoods. We work with other associations in District Two on how to minimize these impacts. Starting in 2016, we sent multiple letters to City Council addressing these issues. When this council voted to allow cultivation, many long-term residents thought how the unique zoning of Robla would bear a disproportionate share of cultivation, threaten the vitality of existing businesses, and impact the residential properties that are adjacent to light industrial zones of property. Again and again, we have asked you to address the policies that have failed this community. After three public hearings of planning and design, we see how the 4500 Pell Drive project exemplifies the failure of these policies to address over-saturation and deconcentration. If you will not listen to this community, then listen to the assessment of the planning and design commissioners you appointed. Support their decision to deny this project and address the issues of cap. At the April 11 public hearing, Commissioner Farrell talked about the small businesses being displaced and said, but we are losing our diversity of healthy job-creating businesses that a cap at some point really needs to be addressed. From this same public hearing from Commissioner Ye, this project demonstrates the need for some guidance as to how to address this issue of concentration. From Commissioner Kaufman, we do have a policy issue here about what constitutes deconcentration. We do have one district where there's a definition, and I think this district and every other district has the right to have that conversation in front of City Council. He goes on further to say, I wish we weren't making policies on a project-by-project basis on issues like this. So we ask for a cap in Robla because none of us wants to be here again on another project with these policies that continue to-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We would like the City Council to support the denial of this project.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Sacramento, I just wanted to publicly state that I oppose the, another cannabis establishment, especially in the Robla area. I'm just speaking as a community member, as a, as an employer and as a business owner. I publicly oppose this establishment and, and, you know, the additional cannabis industry in this area. I don't believe that we have a need for it, and with the amount of incidences and crime that we've already experienced in this area, I, I don't see that this is going to be a, an added deterrent. I, I see this just adding to the issues that we've already had here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next caller, please. Do we have any more callers? It appeared. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if other people have been having trouble, but I've been dropped and having trouble getting on the line here several times. But anyways, what I see a problem is with the law is the Health and Safety Code, Division 10 Uniform Controlled Substances Act 11,000 to 11,651. It says, "No medical cannabis cooperative collective dispensary operator, establishment, or provider who possesses, cultivates, or distributes cannabis pursuant to this article should be located within a 600-foot radius of a school." And I don't know if you know, but next door is a, a youth facility which is considered a, a school. And then also on Division 10 Cannabis, 26,000 to 26,250, on B, it says, "A premises licensed under this division shall not be located within a 600-foot radius of a school providing instruction in kindergarten, running grades one through 12, daycare center, or youth center." Which, which is what the facility next door to it that shares a lot line is, a, a youth center and a daycare center. Through the summer, a daycare center, and through the school year, a youth center. But with the current issues that we're having, I can see that facilities like this are going to be more and more important in providing, you know, daycare for kids, depending on what the regulations from the school boards are going to be as far as how many kids in a classroom and so on, and how many days a week kids go to school. If I could show you graphics, I can show you the lot line, the distances, and all that kind of stuff. I guess that's all that I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you. No more callers. Let me now turn it over to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project is really taking some different shapes over the course of their application and my involvement, and, you know, I'm concerned and I'm disturbed about some of the stuff I'm hearing, because it's counter to what was being told to me previously. As you know, I'm probably one of the, the harshest critics of our marijuana policy in the city. However, people that have followed our policy and my directives, I try to give them fair and honest consideration. And as you all know, I was very specific about cultivation being in industrial areas. And, and, you know, obviously, industrial areas are going to be kind of on the outskirts and somewhat isolated. And my reasoning for that was because I didn't want them in retail areas where the doors were boarded vacant, security people are walking around, sending the wrong signals in retail areas. I thought it was most appropriate for industrials. In my estimation, this applicant has followed the rules, have done everything that they were requested of. And unfortunately, they bought a building that had been the previous home of Olympus Sports, which was, I toured it, was very impressed with the business that was there. And however, the, my understanding was that the previous owner would not extend the lease to Olympus, chose to sell the building, and the new business that bought the building happened to be a marijuana cultivator. That's not unusual. It's happening all over our city. And, you know, in private business, people have a right to buy property and then operate their business as long as they are consistent with the laws. And so when this problem or this project came to me initially, it was everything to do about Olympus. None of the other things that we've heard tonight about potential issues with contracts, close proximity to schools, and, and that sort of thing. And, and I've not seen anything that, not even in our city analysis, that suggests that it's in conflict with any of our internal policies as it relates to that. And so I immediately started trying to work with Olympus to help them. They have had meetings and conversations with Leslie Fritschy. And the whole issue was really around Olympus and their displacement, and then trying to figure out how we could best help them. And as, as the council also knows, I've made a, a, I've had some concerns about our Nexus study. Because I think things like this are problematic, and they really have not been addressed, at least to my knowledge, in our Nexus study, to really determine what the real impacts of marijuana are in our city. But that being said, I think there were a lot of hard feelings. I think there's still a lot of hard feelings between the Olympus folks and their supporters and, and the new property owner. My understanding is that the new property owner attempted to, to soften the blow by suggesting he could help with some of the relocation of Olympus, and apparently that didn't work out. However, I was also then subsequently told that Olympus found a new location. It was not right next door, it was down the street from the previous location. I toured that facility and saw where they had already started moving in. Subsequently, I arranged for Mike Jasso and Leslie Fritschy to work with Olympus to try to figure out where we could support them. Now, the last time I talked to Leslie, she had identified, I think somewhere around $100,000 of assistance we could, we could come up with by way of supporting Olympus in their relocation. Maybe there was some additional assistance. I know Leslie had mentioned to me last that she was waiting to talk to the Spencers about additional support. Now, I am still very interested in trying to maintain Olympus in our district, and would be very strong supporter of trying to assist them in their relocation. However, I do not feel that we should penalize the applicant for operating their business, buying a building, and then choosing to move forward. I, I think the, and I don't know the applicant, I've, I've only met him once at a public meeting very briefly. The company, I believe, is very impressive, and they've committed to hiring. As we know, the marijuana industry is doing extremely well now. We have an extraordinarily high unemployment rate, and so, yes, marijuana will play a role in helping the city of Sacramento, I think, get back on its feet and will employ people. I have two major issues that I needed to look into. One of them, we've done, I asked the city to look into the undue concentration effort. I've heard it suggested on the phone that we have an issue there. There, there is not an undue concentration area. I think if, if they really want to understand the kinds of metrics that went into us determining what was an undue concentration, they could look to District Six, which was being heavily impacted. I looked at what happened in District Six. We're, we're half of the capacity that District Six has in this particular area. So I'm not concerned about undue concentration. I am very open and would be supportive of a cap once we got to a number where we were unduly concentrated. The other thing, though, that was just brought to me just in the last week or so, and the mayor, you asked some very good questions about DOJ and, and Department of Defense and, and IFDs, somehow this business is going to have a real impact. And that question, I've not gotten an answer for. I'd asked the Spencers to email me some stuff they did. I, I cannot determine whether it's a real impact or not. I would, I would, I would say this, and I am prepared to open and close a public hearing and move the item for approval, subject to understanding what the real impacts of this business is relative to their contracts being impacted by the location of this business adjacent to them. I think that's a fair question. I think it's a question that, there's something that will impact more companies. If there is a real impact, we should know about it, you know, and I think it is a legitimate concern for the business owners, the Spencer family. But assuming that there are no impacts to their business, substantial impacts, as a direct result to this business being there, then I would have no problem with the, with approval of this business and this operator. I heard Malachi talk about the, the core program. This, this application has been in the works for, I don't know, over three years, and, you know, I am still waiting to see something tangible from the core program personally. And, 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 and having said that, I'm seeing other African-American and operators coming to the table, ready to do things that may not be directly related to the core program. However, they bring diversity and capacity to the table. And I want, and I want to see that as it relates to marijuana. So I don't think it has to be exclusively the core program, although I would like to see our core program be successful, but not to the exclusion that we let other qualified minority applicants come to the table. This group, I'm not certain if they're minority or not. I don't think they're African-American, however, that does not impact my decision to support this project in the event that the last of my questions can be answered, which is the impact to the contracts of the adjacent business.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Are there other council members who want to weigh in? I think I have Councilmember Carr up next, and Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor. I got a little confused on the Olympus Village. Is it still right next door to this proposed site? Or has it moved?
I believe it's moved, Larry. Olympus, Olympus would have been, but Olympus moved down the street, I think about half a block down the street, as I recall.
So there are no kids or kindergarten kids or elementary school kids coming next door to this site for any reason?
I think we have to have staff answer. I'm not sure if Olympus is- I think we have to have staff answer. I'm not sure if Olympus is, is open or not, uh, actually, but, uh, as far as I could tell, um, there would not have been kids coming right next door. You know, in terms of buildings. I don't know exactly where the property lines are, but in terms of the actual building space. But I think that's something again that, uh, city staff could help answer.
Yeah, Councilmember Warren, uh, Christian can, uh, answer that question and provide some more detail.
Um, yeah, I, I, unfortunately, I do not know, uh, where Olympus is currently located. I did hear, um, 12 months ago that they had found a new home, but I'm not exactly sure where that is. Maybe Lindsey, Lindsey Spencer might know.
How about the, the other question as well, Christian, about, uh, the proximity of, uh, uh, school-aged, uh, children?
Hi, this is Lindsey Spencer. Can I answer that question, please?
Well, I'm actually, I'm gonna have our staff answer that question first.
Okay, sorry.
The, the question about school-aged children?
Yes.
I didn't quite hear.
That's correct.
That's what-
Olympus isn't classified as a sensitive use. We, uh, it's, it was classified as a, as a, as a gym or, um, recreational center. Even though it is youth-oriented.
Is there a youth center, a daycare center or a gym located next, within 600 feet of this site?
There was not any sensitive uses located next to the site, um, as we define them. Within 600 feet, no.
One of these, Vince, one of the speakers talked about, uh, no drugs on their property as a qualification for doing contracts. Are they gonna drive onto the property next door if we approve this?
There is a shared access easement in between the two properties, but the applicant had redesigned the project at their request, um, to, to have all the deliveries on the south side of the building so they would not, um, encroach or use, have to use that access easement between the two buildings.
Okay. And, um, so the, the applicant said that he would provide space in the facility for an incubator. And Alan, you're saying we don't need that to be a core participant to go into that incubator?
No, that's not what I'm saying. It could be, it could, it can be a core program. I'm just saying that I think the comment was that we were permitting another marijuana use. And the Core program is still, you know, I guess, finding their footing. And so, you know, I, I, I'm not, they're not tied, these are not tied to, you know, uh, the two. If, you know, it sounded to me like the applicant is very open to working with the Core program. And in fact, the incubator is designed to do a lot of what Core is doing. Is to try to grow business and entrepreneurs in the marijuana space. And so, you know, I'd be happy to facilitate that. But you can ask the applicant. I think he's on the line.
You still there?
Here. The, the incubator program, it, it could be with Core. Um, my, my plan was basically to have a conversation with, uh, Councilmember Warren and get his feedback and as well as the community on what would be the best way to implement it. Um, the other thing I'd like to mention is, um, it's my understanding that the Olympus Gym actually moved into a property that has a CUP for cannabis.
Okay.
And that's my understanding as well, is that the building that they actually moved into has a CUP for cannabis already approved.
One of the arguments presented was that, uh, Pell Drive was a one-way street and this somehow, uh, was a bad thing. Uh, could somebody address that?
Uh, there is no, the police have reviewed this project and there was no comments to that effect. There's, um, four other existing cannabis sites on the industrial, um, corridor that's Pell and, um, we didn't have any police comments to that effect.
Okay. So Alan, uh, how did your motion go into work? We, if we approve this, uh, and we find out that, um, there is indeed an impact on the business next door, how, how, what do we do? We come back and disapprove this then?
Well, I think, well, we need, I, I need some help from the city attorney because that is a real concern of mine. We want the Spencer business to flourish as it is doing now. Uh, the 20-year business. We want the other Spencer business, which is Olympus. We want that to work as well and we want to support that. But we also want, uh, this new business that is prepared to come in and offer jobs and, uh, help generate revenue for the city of Sacramento. That's been the, that's been the position of the council. And so these, the, 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 the applicant has followed the rules. Uh, they're in the appropriate area. And, uh, I would ask the city attorney to ask, I mean, to tell us how a motion might be crafted that allows us subject to the findings of some, uh, 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 serious economic impact to the, the, uh, the 20-year Spencer business. Um, how we might, uh, fashion a, a, a motion that the council can act on tonight.
Well, Councilmember Warren, as I understand it, the appellant is, is, and, and this was raised at the, uh, uh, Planning and Design Commission meeting. The appellant has asserted that as a result of, of defense contracts that require the appellant's workplace to be free of drugs, that, um, that, uh, impacts a decision for allowing a neighboring property to engage in the cannabis business. And so I, um, I, I believe I'm restating, uh, the appellant's position correctly. Uh, and, uh, that would not impede the council's ability to make this land use decision. Uh, there, I don't believe that there's anything that's, uh, being presented that a neighboring property must also comply, uh, with, uh, the appellant's defense contract requirements to maintain a drug-free workplace in their building. So I'm not sure how that would impact this decision. Uh, uh, it would not impa- would not prevent the council from making this land use decision. Um, I, I suppose you could have a motion, uh, uh, recommending approval um, with a revocation procedure in the event that there is some, uh, information presented by the Department of Defense that requires conditions, um, within a certain amount of, of, uh, footage of the appellant's property.
You know, I would, I would ask your honor, Steinberg, to, uh, to weigh in on this because, uh, uh, I think I heard the city attorney say that the fact that one property has to be drug-free does not necessitate an adjoining or, or subsequent or close proximity property has to be drug-free. And, uh, I think, uh, Susan, what I heard you say is that we could approve this tonight subject to getting something from the Department of Justice or uh, Department of Defense that says, you know, adjoining properties need to also abide by the same policy. I mean, Mr. Mayor, you may have a better idea.
Well, I, I do think, obviously, I think the city attorney is correct. And as I, I heard the Spencer's testimony, I'm not putting words in their mouth. It's just the way that I interpreted it. They said that they have heard from some of their customers who have relationships with the Department of Defense that having this facility next to them would be of concern. And so I think the city attorney has it exactly right, which is, I don't know of anything, and I haven't heard of anything tonight, which would shut down in any way the Spencer's business. I think what they are really saying is they are worried it would have an impact on their business because their customers would maybe less likely to want to continue to contract and do work with them. So that comes down to then a judgment call on our behalf in terms of weighing, i- if you will, the jobs created, uh, as the applicant has demonstrated. Um, your apparent support, uh, if I'm reading it right for the project versus the impact, uh, on an adjoining business. But I don't think there's any legal issue here that I, that, that I have heard tonight that would have a, um, that, that would have the impact that I think you're worried about it in my, in, in real, i- i- in the real world, so to speak. But there is nothing that I have heard tonight that says this business next door has to lose its contracts, has to lose its relationship with the DOD for the reason that Susanna Ocala just said. Namely that the, the drug-free workplace applies to your workplace, not your neighbor's workplace. So I don't think, I don't think your motion, I, I think your, i- i- your motion should be essentially a straight up or down because, uh, i- unless, uh, unless you do want to get some clarity either from the Department of Defense or a more definitive written opinion from the city attorney about the question raised by the Spencer's tonight, that's the way I would do it. I would condition it on a, uh, on a written, uh, report from the city attorney's office whether or not, uh, the approval of this by law shuts down, if you will, uh, the business next door.
Okay. So can, uh, when I know that, I think some of the, I, I, I know Mayor Protem, uh, who knows this family wants to speak, um, on this issue. And so I want to hear what she has to say. And then maybe, uh, Ms. City Attorney, you can, uh, start thinking about, uh, if a motion comes forward, how we might structure that motion.
Okay, um, can Protem Ashby?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions and then a number of thoughts. Uh, first of all, Christian, staff's recommendation is to uphold the Planning Commission's decision, which is to deny the CUP, correct?
Correct.
Can you tell me why that's staff's recommendation?
Um, we're, um, I guess, supporting the, the Planning Commission's decision. Um, we, we're taking direction from them. I know the Planning Commission denied the project because they felt there was, um, no threshold really to measure, um, this over-concentration. And they would, wanted the council to kind of weigh in on, on that undue concentration, um, finding, which, you know, in D6, um, southeast area is specified, but for the rest of the city is, is quite unspecified. So they were really struggling, um, to find direction and wanted to have you, have the council weigh in on that as well.
The staff, the staff's recommendation is predicated primarily on supporting the Planning Commission's decision. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Correct, correct. I mean, uh, but-
That's fine. And then one other question. Is Brian still on the phone here?
Yes, ma'am.
Brian, in your presentation, you mentioned that you helped us with Railroad Drive. What did you mean by that?
And it, it's an example of working with one of the cities that were in, um, for a common goal.
How did you help us?
I, I worked with the city to, as far as the homeless shelter goes, I had nothing to do with the planning of the homeless shelter. I own the building. There was a, a need that I was told and I participated.
So you, you bought the building from Ethan Conrad?
No, I did not buy the, the building from Ethan Conrad. I bought it, Ethan Conrad, I don't think ever owned that building.
Okay. So-
Dixon.
I'm sorry, what's that? Go ahead.
I bought it from a family that was from Dixon.
Okay. Okay. And you, yes, Mayor?
No, no, please continue. I'm sorry.
Okay. And so you, I'm just trying to understand how, so you helped us because you owned the building at Railroad Drive that we ultimately used as a homeless shelter temporarily?
I don't think I said help. I said I, we had a partnership with the city where you guys put a homeless shelter in there. I didn't physically set up the homeless shelter. It wasn't my idea to put it in. There was a need and we participated.
You leased the building to us?
Exactly. We, we met there.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. Okay, so here's, here's my overarching problem with this. Uh, if we want to move forward with marijuana, which you all do and have voted routinely, all of you, to move forward with marijuana, we have to think about what the consequences of marijuana moving into the city are. And this one is egregious. It's not Brian's fault. It's not Alan's fault. But when we took that, the measures that we took and created the system that we created, we put a prime on this type of space. And that made it very difficult for industries that don't work in multi-million dollars, like marijuana, to compete for those spaces. I do know the Spencer's. There are two sets of Spencer's here and that may be why some of you are confused. There are two Spencer businesses and they bookend this site. Those two Spencer businesses used to be right next door to each other and now they have one building in between them. The building that does Olympus, which is not open because of COVID, but would be otherwise, does have children's programs. And I don't just mean kids come there to play soccer. They have a contract with Robla School District. Robla buses children after school there for after-school programming. Aside from that, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of children from Natomas and Robla and Twin Rivers go to the Olympus site. The site that they're in now is much smaller than the site that they were in before. They are a normal family. They are not millionaires. They're just regular folks who took their entire life savings and invested it in District Two in a warehouse space to create batting cages and indoor frisbee golf and indoor sports and an area for families. And when the value of warehouse space went up, they lost their lease. And as Alan can tell you, it was extremely controversial. We both tried to help, but the owner and the tenant just, it was very clear to me that the owner wanted to be in a different kind of business because they would make more money. And Olympus was not in a position to compete at that financial level. So once they got rid of Olympus, then they started putting the site on the market. And now the person who owns it needs a CUP to make the kind of money they want to make off of that site. What we lost as a city, what District Two lost was a terrific facility. And I know Councilmember Warren knows that. He tried to find another way and we just didn't find one. They on their own found a building a door down that did have a CUP on it, but that the owner thought was more important based on the community to try to allow to use this facility. It's less than half the size of what the previous one was. So it has less than half of the amenities. And the Spencer family is out hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that they invested in our city to serve kids, particularly at-risk kids and after-school kids. And everything that I hear all of you talk about every single day that we want to value as a city. And it's gone now, uh, and it'll be gone even more if we continue to do this because these groups cannot, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, these mom-pop shops, the Spencer's, these families cannot compete with the marijuana industry for warehouse space. It's a multi-million dollar industry versus a, a not multi-million dollar industry. So our policies and our decisions are shaping what we're gonna get in those communities. And there we're also shaping what we're pushing out of those communities. I listened to this council not two weeks ago vote eight to one, me as the one and all eight of you to agree about how we should listen to our Planning Commission and how they brought forward this amazing proposal to streamline and how, you know, if they all agreed, we should do it. But now today, we're not gonna listen to our Planning Commission. That was two weeks ago. This is today. Today, this is a different day. The Planning Commission's not right this time. But two weeks ago, they were right. Um, that's weird. I just heard Malachi get off the phone. We're, uh, three days into protests from the black community asking us for opportunity. I've watched many of you promise that Core would get ev- the next- I've watched many of you promise that Core would get the next, the next one. Let's just add five more. We add five more, we can get Core participation, and we can up the number of African-Americans who get to work in the marijuana industry and somehow right the wrong of the, you know, say no to drugs, where Del Paso Heights was disproportionately victimized, et cetera, et cetera. You got Malachi on the phone saying, please don't do this because it flies in the face of what you all have promised, and we're going to do it anyway. So I don't understand why we are ignoring the planning commission all of a sudden. We don't care about kids' programs anymore. We don't care that there's an after-school program next door. We don't care that Malachi called and asked us to prioritize Core. And we don't care that the community showed up in droves and sent you all letters saying that they feel there's an over-concentration there. And there are more facility square footage there than we have allowed under the cap in District Six. And we have previously said we wouldn't allow any more cannabis in District Two until we had a community plan based on the Nexus study that would promise that these facilities would give back to the community. And I heard the proponent say he's already given back to the community because he helped us with a homeless shelter at Richards Boulevard, which, that's not a great precedent to set for us, and I know you all know that. So I am very uneasy with this for a million reasons. It's it's a completely inconsistent vote. For anybody who's tracking the values of anyone on this council, supporting this is inconsistent with everything we've said we're going to do. Supporting youth, investing in our poor neighborhoods, helping kids, listening to our planning commission, and so while I am feel dearly for Councilmember Warren, there's no way I would support this. And I would ask all of you that do to understand what you are saying to mom-pop shops throughout the city of Sacramento who require warehouse space to serve our youth.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Who was next? Was it Councilmember Carr?
Councilmember Hanson is next.
Hanson is next, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I I think that it is our general practice here to defer to the council member in the district unless the issues are citywide in nature or have some other extraneous factor that would cause us to substitute our judgment. And and those are always very painful decisions when we make them. And I today am not here to substitute my judgment for Councilmember Warren. I do think, though, that it's important as we go through this, one, I disagree with Councilmember Ashby on the prior point that we're being inconsistent. I believe that the Planning Commission, in passing the ordinance to us on streamlining, was making a citywide policy choice that had very important ramifications. And and while we voted eight to one there, where Councilmember Ashby dissented, I think that shows that our processes are working, but that the Planning Commission doesn't necessarily always know on a district-specific project what's right. And I've seen this go back and forth, you know, Mr. Carr, we supported you on projects. I know that the council has supported me and others when things come up like this. So I think that that general precedent is is important. And I would reject the idea that the Planning Commission got it wrong because it is here now before us, and we have to review it in a way, because we're in a quasi-judicial setting, unlike an ordinance, we have to review this de novo. So it doesn't really matter for the record what the Planning Commission did, we're not supposed to take that into consideration on a de novo hearing, which this is, and you know that, I know. And if the city attorney would like to correct me on that, I'd be all ears. The only thing I would say is I brought up before on call-ups, the desire, and this is a great example of this, where this particular item has been agendized five times, I believe, over eighteen months for us. And I think that the the most important thing I would like to say is that I think we need to improve our call-up process so so that the people who are for and against these things don't have to wait for us to make a decision for so long, but there's a little bit more certainty. Whether that's a timeline around the decision-making process, six months seems pretty fair. We're not here to make that today, but I would offer that as giving more guidance to the people who might be adjacent, but also to the property owners. And, you know, I know Mr. Warren has struggled with how to handle these issues in his district. We've often had items before us about concentration of storefronts on Del Paso Boulevard, as well as other issues. And I think largely we've tried to support Councilmember Warren in his efforts to manage this particular industry in his district, just like we have Councilmember Gera, and just like we've allowed Mayor Pro Tim Ashby to block all marijuana businesses in her district. Even though that may seem unfair, I think we're trying to do the best for our people as representatives. And while I think it's fair to disagree on a project, I don't think it's fair to to make all those other suggestions that we're being inconsistent, I think we're just doing our best. So with that, I I'm prepared to support the motion, and I believe Councilmember Warren has the best interests of his district at heart. But I do believe the the process itself here needs better refinement so that these things don't linger and motions don't go on for so long. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I have to address one thing because he addressed me directly.
Of course.
This arrogance to use Councilmember Carr as an example of a of a person that we listened to in his district is unfathomable. This council railroaded Councilmember Carr very recently. No, I didn't cut you off, I didn't talk over you. I can cut off either one of you. I don't need either one of you to talk over me. I'm a big girl, I can speak for myself.
Go there, you can, you can, I gave you-
Councilmember Hanson, I sat and listened to your whole comments. I didn't speak over you as you are rudely giving out. I am simply responding to the statements that you made, which were almost all about me, and I am saying to you, I am allowed to have, you want to talk over me some more?
I can't because you talk so much.
That's, that's fantastic. Very, very professional of you, Councilmember.
Okay, Council-
My point, Mayor-
I'm the presiding officer here. I would like to clarify, Councilmember Ashby has the floor. So please continue, and then I'll happily turn it back to Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Geta was next, but I will allow, and please neither member talk over one another, Councilmember Ashby has the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We're all allowed to figure out our own rationale and our own reasoning. That's our job here. The nine of us work through everything. I was very clear about why I've come to my position. I wanted to share it with everyone so they understand my rationale and reasoning and why I am confused about my colleague's rationale and reasoning. And I would have sat silently through your criticism of me, but I simply cannot sit quietly when one of the first things out of your mouth was, we need to honor the council member from the district, and then you used Councilmember Carr as your example, which is just the worst possible example you could have used, because this council, including you, railroaded Councilmember Carr on the single item he wanted the most in the last year. So that's it for me, Mayor.
Councilmember Hanson, would you like to respond? And then we're going to move to Councilmember Geta.
First, let me just say, I apologize for that comment, Councilmember Ashby, about the the way we were engaging. But I do believe that when we had the project by Bob Pacora, we followed Councilmember Carr's lead on that. I made a distinction about district-specific and dis- and citywide issues. And I believe the homeless shelter in Meadowview, although we fought over that as council, is largely resolved, but was a citywide issue. And that is, that is my rationale there. So I just thought it was helpful to explain that, and I don't believe it's fair to misrepresent my comments either.
Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to avoid all this hyperbole I've been hearing beforehand, just kind of get to some facts here. I think we're we're in a situation here where we've got a decision to deny a project based on the inability to develop a policy beforehand of a definition of undue concentration. And I know this is just speaking from my experience with council, with my council district, because we do have a a large industrial area. And so we used an methodical process to define what would be the factors of defining a project to ensure that there was both fairness for the the businesses in the area, the community that's adjacent to these areas, and fairness to the applicants. And I think the the most important thing that we have to figure out is how to make, how to do that. And that, in this situation, at least from my understanding from my planning commissioner, is that the planning commission met multiple times to discuss this and could not get to an agreement to deny the project on policy. The 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 administrator approved it based on the things that the this council had approved. And the rationale to finally deny the project was made to bring it up to the council decision because they could not get to a position. So, you know, so I, and and that had to do with the definition of undue concentration. So I, again, I think it's a situation where it's kind of a cart before the horse, because if if we if we follow what's in the staff report of undue concentration, I have a question about what are the findings that are used to determine that? And then, does that, does that make, are those findings significant? All I heard from staff was, well, we're just supporting the planning decision's decision, not necessarily that there is a decision. So I guess first, one question I would ask the zoning administrator or the planning staff is, what were the factors in the decision of approving the project in the first place? And then, and I'd just like to hear that. And then, second, I, you know, I it also, I also feel a little precarious about denying a project because of a third-party hearsay of an adjacent business. I I feel a little concerned about that, you know, if had had that information been available in the staff report concrete, I think I'd probably be in a much different situation, but I think there's a lot of quagmire here that I think we probably need to have. But one, one clear thing is, I I do think that it's, we're in in sketchy waters without some clarity here. So I'll ask staff to respond to that.
Sure. Staff doesn't believe that there is over-concentration here. This, this project was approved by the ZA. It was a typical cannabis project. We went through the exercise of looking at comparing the square footage of industrial in the southeast area of of your district to to that of D two, and and I presented those findings that, you know, it's only half of of what what southeast area has. There, the 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 planning commission did struggle heatedly for three, three rounds of hearings to to make the findings, but the policy in effect is is vague. I mean, you know, it's undue, undue concentration. So they they were ultimately persuaded that that they felt that there was too much along that Pell corridor. There are four other existing sites on that Pell Pell corridor within a mile there, but that is, you know, par for the course in your district. I I think that over-concentration would occur outside the Power Inn area when operational characteristics of the proposed business, combined with other businesses, other existing cannabis businesses, would create a health and safety hazard, that, or a blight situation. That's when we get into an area that, as a planner, we can wrap our head around, you know, some situation that would be a bad situation for the city in terms of planning. And so that really wasn't an issue here. So I, you know, but we 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 support the planning commission's findings, or, and and we carried forth that recommendation to you of denial. And then I, your other question, I, was it about the 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 after-care school program?
No, it was the contractor, that they may lose their contract. I mean, is there a precedent?
Oh, yeah, we looked into that. I'm not an attorney or expert on those affairs, but we looked into, it was the drug-free work workplace that, it was in the nineteen eighties, and I believe the applicant was referring to that. But that has nothing to do with adjacent properties. That has to do with the con- with the with the contractor itself being drug-free. So there was no mention of anything about adjacent properties or anything of that nature. But again, in the nineteen eighties, there was no camp, you know, legalized cannabis in the United States.
And based on all of the guidelines, and I mean, all of the 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 codes that we've put, that the city council has voted on to, in determining location, is there any health risk or community risk that you've identified based on that, on all the findings that we put together?
No, no, the, it, the Olympus Coliseum moved next door after the the fact. So when this was approved, this took over where the Olympus was, and they were in limbo. The project was approved, and then it was denied in in May of twenty nineteen, a little bit over, about a year ago. So it wasn't, it was technically denied during that time, where maybe the Olympus Club did move in next door. So we have a little bit of a chicken and the egg type of situation here, but when it was approved, there was no sensitive use. And even still, the Olympus is not a school, and therefore it doesn't unfortunately register as as a as a sensitive use.
Oh, I mean, I, I, this is my final comment, because I'm I'm trying to work through this, Mr. Mayor, but, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, both the, on the Olympus thing, you know, believe me, I, I, I look at the Washington Neighborhood Center, it's been a tough place to keep open, and and they've always had to make decisions on how to maintain their facility open. And it's important that we have those. But they also decided to move, relocate right next to a facility that was still being actively pursued and approved for as a cannabis facility after they had left their facility. So I, I mean, a bit of a, an issue here of, you know, who who has precedent here? So that's, I think, the challenge, because they were approved for a CUP by the zoning administrator, the facility moved, and there, there, there's this limbo. We're still in limbo because there's no operation happening. But I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Madam Clerk, who is next?
Vice Mayor Harris has-
Oh, Vice Mayor Harris waving his hands, there you go. Straighten this out for us, will you please?
Mayor, I'll do my best. I I do have a couple of questions. First, I assume Brian is still on the line?
Yes, I am.
So Brian, how many employees potentially would you have at this facility?
I think roughly fifty, but it could grow substantially, a lot more in the future, but with the whole, it would be about fifty.
Do you have adequate parking there to accommodate fifty employees as well as delivery trucks? Especially since you can't use the joint, joint parking area, the joint driveway?
There's a a huge yard that goes all the way around the property, and even with fifty employees, it, they're on rotation, so they're not all in one shift. There's plenty of parking. It's actually a a comparable facility in Los Angeles is like seventy thousand square feet, and we have three hundred employees with less parking.
So these employees that you will potentially hire, is there any problem with you hiring core participants and graduates?
Absolutely not. We'd love to work with the core program.
So could you make it a priority to do so?
Absolutely.
So I'm, thank you, Brian, that's all, all my questions for you.
Thank you.
You know, the the argument from Malachi really confused me because this seems like an opportunity to hire core, core graduates. So that's one piece that that I wanted to to look at. Pro Tim's Ashby argument about five more being opened, I, that one confused me because I think she was alluding to storefront dispensaries was, which does not apply to this project at all, as far as that piece goes. Look, the, there is a problem here, and that is a lack of policy, and is demonstrated by the fact that staff has made a recommendation that actually contradicts their initial findings about the project. There is a lack of policy still regarding cannabis industry. There is a lack of policy still regarding cannabis industry. And I want to laud Councilmember Murguera for actually doing the hard work of acknowledging a problem in this district and taking the steps to create a policy that would help give our body something substantial upon which to make a decision. So the question then, up, up there in District 2, is, is this over-concentration? That's what, that was the ultimate finding of the Planning Design Commission. But there was no policy to substantiate it, so it was a subjective decision. That's why they wanted to kick it back to the city council, so that we could make a policy to, you know, be able to make an intelligent decision in this regard. I do have a question for staff, maybe it's actually for PD. But there are four other cannabis businesses on Pell Drive. Are Christian, have there been any recorded incidents at those, at those facilities?
None that I have heard of, or none that were made in, brought up in comment or in, in review, in their review of it. So that wasn't an issue.
So no issues with Olympus, no issues with children? Anything, any incidents recorded by PD about the previous installation?
No, no.
So let me ask you this. If this facility is, is, goes into cultivation, and if the building where Olympus is relocated, which has a CUP, were to be put into cultivation, what relative level of concentration would that put this area at? Would it be above 10% then?
No, no, not at all. Like I said, it's, it's four, I have a map of, in fact, if you would like to see, I could share my screen. But I can also just tell you that it's, it's four sites strung along Pell Drive over a mile, which again is, you know, compared to District 6, is, is just not, you know, not over-concentrated compared. So we, we tried to make a comparison to what we had, where we had a definition of undue concentration. And it is, you know, it's hard for staff, like, you know, to, to, to implement this policy, because like Councilmember Murguera was saying, we don't have any metric to measure it. So we, we took what was in District 6 and, and used their 10% of their industrial space, and then compared that to, to, to D2. And D2 is, is half of what, of where, of where undue concentration is defined. So that's all we have. You know, we're, we're trying to kind of piece it together backwards in, in this area. And, and I, I, I think that works in some regard. But again, it's district to district and how people feel about it. And the, the, the population came out and voiced their concerns about it. And they felt that it was, that, that there was too much. So is, is that, you know?
Thank you. So what we have here is a situation where we don't have a policy that we can point to to make an educated decision. What we have is a subjective feeling on the part of many people, including the Planning Design Commission. I would suggest to Councilmember Warren that perhaps one solution for him in this situation is to hold this over and try to build a concentration policy for D2, specifically in the Pell area, so that this, that issue of over-concentration could be put to rest. That would certainly make a decision from me a lot easier if I could point to, you know, that and say, look, it's not over-concentrated, but it's still a subjective decision. There is an underlying assumption that the cannabis industry has an adverse effect on neighborhoods. I have not found this to be true in District 3. But I would tell you, I had that trepidation when we started down this path of legalizing cannabis industry in Sacramento. I was very worried about most of the aspects of cannabis, as was Pro Tem Ashby, as was Mr. Warren, as was Councilmember Carr, you know. But those fears that I had initially have not really borne out in District 3. Now, I have not had to struggle with the over-concentration part. Happily for me, the applicants have been fairly well distributed in my district. So that has not been my particular cross to bear. However, if I, if, if it was, I would want to define what over-concentration is, so that there could be parity here. So that any applicant would know what they were up against and not face a year of uncertainty of call-ups and so forth, and bouncing back and forth between the council and Planning Design Commission. The other industry adjacent, if I wanted to shut down a cannabis installation next to my business, I would come with hard evidence about how it would adversely affect my business, and not just a narrative on that we think it will be a bad thing. I mean, look, they produce a product. The product will be just as good whether or not, I assume, will be just as good whether or not there is a use next door that really has no relationship to their business whatsoever. But if, as, as Councilmember Warren says, there may be an issue there, that would certainly have to be substantiated. So, you know, ultimately, this, this one is kind of messy. Staff first approved the project, then staff comes to us with a recommendation to uphold the Planning Design Commission, which says there's over-concentration. But staff argues that there is no over-concentration. There's really some contradictory things going on here. I think that this could be a benefit to the core participants. I think that if run well, and I guess there's some anticipation that this can be run very well, that there will be no adverse consequences for the immediate area, other than this perception that cannabis is a bad thing. You know, I'm not a real big proponent of the cannabis industry. I, I was hesitant to get involved in this thing altogether. But we made the decision as a council to regulate this industry or, or face the consequence of the state regulating us, and we would have to cede our control. Well, we got the control. Now we're facing the consequences of that. Overall, at this point, I just don't think that there is any policy that we can point to that says that this is a use that we should not accept. That being said, I do understand the outcry of the community. And once again, I would have to look to the council member to be the leader here. Thank you, Mayor.
I just, I would like to, before I turn it over to Councilmember Warren, and I, my, I'm, I'm still listening and have not made it my mind as, as necessary and appropriate in a quasi-adjudicatory hearing. But I just want to say a couple of things about some of what has been said here. It is true that there is not a policy in District 2. But it's also clear from this hearing that there is a precedent. And that is the precedent set by Councilmember Gueda, the 10% threshold. And we heard from staff a moment ago that in fact, this project would not have Pell or District 2 exceed that precedent. So yes, a policy would be, I think, more helpful and definitive. But it's not as if we are without guidance here. Secondly, I don't want to get into the back and forth that we heard between two respected colleagues. But I just want to give you my point of view. I think it is important about this issue of deference to council members, since I represent all of the districts. I believe that the district council member, when it comes to an issue in his or her district, ought to be heard first. But I do not believe that the standard ever should be deference to the council member. It's what's best for the city, period, end of story. The only time deference comes into play for the council member is if it's a close call. You know, the old tie base goes to the runner, so to speak, in baseball. Okay, that's fine. But it's our, you know, and we take our district, you take your district very personally, as did I, when I, and that's fine. And you fight for your district, absolutely. But we all have a responsibility to exercise our independent judgment. And finally, on this question, I think Councilmember Ashby made a really good point. But I do think, I, I want to qualify it from my perspective in a moment. There is a seeming inconsistency between the action we took two weeks ago to, to end these kinds of issues at the planning commission without call-up to the council. However, I think Mr. Hanson made a good point. I think we are legally bound to hear this. And we are legally bound to exercise our independent judgment, whether it's inconsistent or not. Because this application or appeal is now old, and it preexists the change in policy. And so whether you liked or didn't like the change in policy, we have an obligation, man, that's been brought home, as we all know, in a variety of ways with other projects. We have an, an obligation not to give deference to anything or anybody, including the policy that changed two weeks ago, but to our independent judgment. And that's, that's what I'm going to buy. I really want to hear from Councilmember Warren on some of the substantive issues that Councilmember Ashby raised, specifically the proximity to Olympus and youth, and the council member's view of this concentration and over-concentration issue. Because Councilmember Warren has been a consistent advocate for not disproportionately, not putting these facilities disproportionately in lower-income districts of the city. So I'm, I'm very interested in Councilmember Warren's summation here, if you will, going through all the points and arguments that have been made here over the last hour. Please.
With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say, I mean, this is, you know, a passionate issue. It's a, you have a family who is, has kind of two stakes in this game, and, and, you know, a long history of working in the district. And I want to be very clear that we do not want to adversely impact the Spencer's 20-year business. And I'd like to do everything I can do to help support Olympus to the extent we can. And I've instructed staff to do and try to find resources to help them. I know how important sports are. I know how important youth activities are. And maybe with some of our new stimulus money we got, maybe some of that could be made available to help Olympus, particularly around the youth stuff. And so I'd like to, to, to just put that marker down for council that to the extent we can, we want to look to support Olympus with some of our COVID-19 money. The applicant, in my opinion, is played by the rules. They've done everything that they were supposed to do. I have searched long and hard to try to find justification. And, you know, if I'm one thing, I am fair. I am fair across the board. And if you play by the rules and you do the right thing, this applicant has done that. They are an established leader in the industry. I think they would be an asset in the community. I've heard the principal state that he would make working with Core a priority. I think that is important. I also believe that hiring primarily from District 2 will also help us to offset the vast numbers of unemployed people in District 2. The over-concentration issue, i- i- it is not fair for, and, and I recognize that when people get emotional, they will say things, and, and they, a lot of things come out. But it, it is not a fair statement to say that we have a, a over-concentration on the Pell Avenue in that industrial area. You know, it is not a fair analysis based on the standards that have already been set by the city. I mean, we're just about half of what District 6 is in terms of ratios. And so, and I have instructed my staff to work with city staff to really come up with something we can present and discuss with the community about a cap, about when we would be capped out. And so that is currently in process. And so, but we're not there yet. We are not at a undue concentration level in District 2. And in fact, we are, as a city, going to be opening up additional applicants for retail. And, and I have suggested that District 2 should be high on the list for new retail applications as well. And I believe our retail corridors could benefit from it. And so I will be advocating for District 2 to have retail participants receive, receive licenses to, to operate in our business corridors. But as for our industrial corridors, cultivation, in my opinion, is, is suited more so for industrial than any of the other areas in our city. And I have also felt like, not just the fact that they would have 50 jobs in the community, but, but Brian has mentioned that his, his jobs would be union jobs, which means that they're going to have a varying degree of benefits associated with them. And so, you know, I think those things are extremely important. And again, marijuana is one of the few industries right now that is hiring people. It is doing extremely well. And although I have not been a advocate for our current ordinances and policies of marijuana in our city, I believe it will pay a role in helping our city to really get back on its feet. And so with that, I am prepared to open and close public hearing to move this item for approval. And I would like to ask the city attorney if, if there is language that I can put in my motion that says that if the Spencer's come back with something definitive from the Department of Defense that indicates that they will be subject to loss of their contracts or something that adversely affects them as it relates to this business, if we can add that to the motion, maybe allow the Spencer's 30 days to go and, and, and find, or, or make contact with the people they need to and to figure out if they can get something that would validate their, their statements, then that would be my motion, you know, so if.
Okay, is there a second, is there a second? First of all, Madam City Attorney, can you clarify how Councilmember Warren's intent around, if you will, the impact on the Spencer's might be dead as part of the motion?
Well, Councilmember, I think that what I could recommend, because I can't, I've been trying to figure out a way to include that as a condition, and I cannot find any way to include that as a condition. You could continue this matter for 30 days, just because of time and, and where we're at right now. For the Spencer's to provide that information, give them an opportunity to provide evidence for the council on that specific issue, and then have the council hear it again.
Would we then be required to go back through the hearing again?
Yes.
And do all the things?
Yes. You'd be continuing the hearing to allow them to have that time.
Yeah, my sense is that the council is prepared to hear this item today. At least that's been what I've been told, that they're prepared. And this, this item has, has waited for almost a year to be heard. And so, Mr. Mayor, do you have any, any idea relative?
Yeah, I, I would say this. I would, I would, your motion, but I would say that if in the next, I would just throw it out, 14 days, the, the Spencer's can come back with any kind of verification that their business is disqualified because of the adjoining site that we would be approving tonight? is disqualified because of the adjoining site that we would be approving tonight, that then this would come back to the council for reconsideration. Otherwise, after two weeks, the date, the action that we take tonight would go into effect. I would make your motion prospective for two weeks from now. And if there is that kind of verification that they are disqualified for operating their businesses, their business next door, then it would come back for further consideration. Otherwise, your motion goes into effect. How about that, Madam City Attorney?
That could work, Mayor. And I also want to raise the reminder, too, that if, in fact, it's determined that it's being operated in violation of any public welfare provisions or health and safety issues, then they're always subject to revocation.
Okay. Well, that's always--
Well, then--
Councilmember Gett-- so is that the motion, then, Councilmember Warren?
That would be the motion, then.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Getta has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, did I hear you correctly? I need some clarification here. One, did I hear you correctly that you said that there are four other cannabis businesses that have been approved on Pell Drive prior to this?
Yes, correct.
And that's a part of the mix of the percentages for District Six, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
How long have they-- have they been there?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Has it been within a year?
No, no, prior-- so they were in existence a year ago.
Prior to the application. So, okay. So then, I mean, that's an important thing, because I think one of the things that I heard was that if we approve this today, then there would be a cannabis business next to this sports coliseum business. But whether this is approved or not, what I'm hearing then, if I heard you correctly, that there would still be four other cannabis businesses in that area.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I mean, to me, that, I mean, I think that argument, I think, is-- it just says to me that the, you know, with all due respect to the Spencer's, they decided to relocate in a place that already had four other cannabis businesses. And so I've got some conflicting things about that. They're a business, too. They've got businesses and decisions to make, and they chose another location from there. Okay, thank you. You know, my only con-- my only request to staff on this is that, you know, I think every part of the city, just like we do with special planning districts, needs to have their view of what is, what's happening in that for over-concentration. And we have special planning districts because we have too many storages, or we have too many, what do you call it, smoke shops, or too many liquor stores. And we've done that to narrow it, to make sure that it's specific to that area. And so I know we did that work there to make it, to make it fair for applicants also and the community about what they want. So I'll just leave it at that, Mr. Mayor. I think that answered an important question of something that I needed to have answered before I--
Mr. Mayor, could I, very quick comment?
It's Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I heard Brian say both on Core and basically local higher District Two that they would be given priority. Is that something that you'd be willing to put in your motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to put it in my motion, absolutely.
No.
So that's-- Is that a friendly amendment?
That is a friendly amendment to your motion to include priority hiring for Core participants and District Two residents.
Absolutely, I accept.
The seconder of the motion?
I don't know if we had a second. I'm happy to second.
Yeah, Larry had second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wish I had come up with it.
That's a yes, okay. And that's intent, correct? Because that's intent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think Mr. Warren can also work with the applicant as far as kind of an annual report or something like that of local hires and Core participants. We want to watch that as time goes by.
Absolutely. In fact, I would also convene a meeting with Core and local residents of D2 to help get this off to a good start.
Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk, the motion has been made and seconded, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll one member at a time, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Now--
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Motion passes eight to one. The appeal is denied, eight to one. All right, thank you. Let us move on to the last item of the evening, and that is the McKinley Village Community Facilities District.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is John Colville. Claudia Lara from my office will be giving the presentation. This is her first time in front of council, so good luck, Claudia.
Hello, hello, Ms. Lara.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Claudia Lara, and I'm with the City Treasurer's Office. Also joining today, as you noted, is City Treasurer John Colville. The item before you for consideration today is the authorization of the issuance for the City of Sacramento McKinley Village Community Facilities District, number 2015-04 Improvements, Special Tax Bonds, Series 2020, which I will reference as district throughout my remarks. The district is the residential development that consists of 352 parcels and is located in East Sacramento, in close proximity to downtown and midtown. In June of 2016, the city issued about $6.6 million in bonds on behalf of the district to acquire public improvements constructed by the developer of the district, N Core McKinley Village LLC. About $6.3 million of the Series 2016 bonds are still outstanding and will be refinanced by the issuance of the Series 2020 bonds. It is estimated that the issuance of Series 2020 bonds will result in net present value savings of about 9.5%, which meets the 5% savings threshold in accordance with the city's debt policy when considering the refinancing opportunities. Unlike a typical bond refinancing, the cash flow savings that may result when the Series 2016 bonds are refinanced by the Series of 2020 bonds will be applied towards the concurrent issuance of new money bonds to acquire additional improvements constructed by the developer in the district. The estimated amount of new money bonds is 1.9 million. The debt service on the Series 2020 bonds will be payable from the receipt of special taxes from the district. Neither the city's general fund nor any other fund or source of funds will be pledged for payment on these bonds. Staff recommends that the city council pass the resolution that will authorize, one, the issuance of the City of Sacramento McKinley Village Community Facilities District, number 2015-04 Improvements, Special Tax Bonds, Series 2020; two, the execution and delivery of a master indenture, a first supplemental indenture, a bond purchase contract, an official statement, a continuing disclosure certificate, an agreement for bond counsel services, and disclosure council agreement; and three, any other action needed in connection with the bonds. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Harris, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, by the way. Well done.
Thank you.
You know, Mayor, McKinley Village has turned out to be a really tremendous asset for District Three. An awful lot of city workers live there, short commute. It really met the requirements, or I would say, our city goals in terms of medium-density infill. It's been effective, it's beautiful, it's also well-built, very well-built. It was a real risk by the developer to bring this thing forward. It's been a difficult project, but it's extremely well-executed. I'm proud of what it is and how it's taken shape, and I would like to move staff recommendation to resolution and number two and three as well.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any public testimony on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no speakers in the queue on this item.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
I will note that the McKinley Village project was a project that the council member at the time didn't support, but it has turned out to be really beautiful. So I just thank Jeff for his leadership on seeing it through.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Let's call the roll on the motion, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. All right, that measure passes unanimously. That concludes the formal agenda. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Let me double-check. I don't believe there are. Please let me confirm.
Mr. Colt, somebody's not-- If you could please mute your phone, whoever is not muted, except for me.
Mr. Mayor, do you have one caller for public comments for matters not on the agenda?
All right, please, let's take that caller.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Parker Evans, and I'm a Midtown resident. I'm calling you today to urge you to reconsider the city budget's increased police funding. A couple of weeks ago, you guys passed the earliest city budget in recent history, and I think that the guiding philosophy behind that budget was generally sound. With COVID, we don't really know how any of this is going to really end up looking. So let's do our best to preserve the status quo until we can really get a handle on the impact of this coronavirus thing. To me, that makes sense. But I think that there's one area in the budget for which the status quo is absolutely completely untenable, and that is the funding for police. Sacramento has followed the standard strategy of increasing police spending year after year, and that strategy has unequivocally failed. I'm not sure how any sane person can look at the events of the past few days and say, wow, these police need more equipment. To continue the allocation of city resources towards the militarization of our police is to disrespect the Sacramento's who marched for George Floyd, Stephen Clark, for any of the countless black lives murdered by police in America. Mr. Mayor, when you say that you grieve with the community over these deaths, I believe you. I believe that you share our righteous anger towards that injustice. You cannot allow the City of Sacramento to go down a path that perpetuates that injustice. You must walk back to increase in police funding. You have plenty of time to do so. The fiscal year doesn't start until July 1st, and the past two budgets weren't adopted until mid-June. There are any number of worthy programs that deserve a funding increase, pick one. But after the events of the past week, you cannot possibly believe that funding for the Sacramento Police Department, as your budget is set to effect, does the right thing to do.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much for your comment. I do appreciate it and take it in. All right, are there council ideas and questions? I know I have one, but let's see people waving. I'm not sure if that's-- it's children waving, which is wonderful. Okay, is that, is that council--
Councilmember Getta, and then Hanson.
Councilmember Getta, and then Hanson, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, sorry, sorry. Over the last couple of days, we had some of our domestic violence shelters were vandalized, and I know I was reached out by Beth Hassett from Weave. And what I'm asking the city manager to do is, I know we've approved the $2 million for domestic violence for COVID responses, and I'm asking that if the city manager can prioritize moving that forward so we can at least get our services that are providing domestic violence support during this time to be able to respond quickly to that as soon as possible. That's it, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there other council ideas and questions?
Councilmember Hanson, and then Vice Mayor Harris.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment to thank you and my colleagues, our city staff, especially our police department, our code enforcement staff, and a variety of others for being very cooperative with us over the last few days, as we've seen really unprecedented circumstances happening in our city. And I want to save my special thanks, though, to the residents who've come out to peacefully demonstrate, to call for change, to call for the end of not only systemic racism, but for pure justice in our community and across the country. And as part of that, I would just like us to adjourn tonight in memory of George Floyd. I grew up in St. Paul in Minneapolis. My friend Steve and his girlfriend Victoria, who visited us last fall here, some of you may have met when they visited City Hall, they just live a few blocks from where Mr. Floyd was killed. And Victoria runs an arts organization right next to the Cup Market where the incident occurred that precipitated Mr. Floyd's killing. And so they have shared with me what's going on in their neighborhood and their community, how they're grieving, and I know many people here are also grieving in the ways that they feel are right for them. And so I just think it's appropriate tonight, just in solidarity and to express our condolences to the Floyd family. So I just wanted to share that, and I wanted to, again, thank my colleagues and our city staff for their tremendous work over the last few days to make sure the city is allowing for the righteous peaceful protests and also trying to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Are there any other members?
Vice Mayor Harris.
Vice Mayor Harris, did you have something?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. Steve, I appreciate your comments. You know, obviously, the country is under tremendous stress right now from a pandemic and then the murder of George Floyd. And in fact, this body did condemn that act, actually, publicly, which I wanted to make note of. So as you know, I've made announcements about a concert, a Pops concert, this Saturday, and the recent events made us go back, our committee, and decide whether or not it was appropriate to move forward with the concert. We have decided that the answer is yes, because, you know, even though we are under stress in our city and our country generally, we acknowledge what has gone on, but we are still Sacramento, and we still come together as a community. I think we need a respite. You know, we've been under house arrest for two and a half months. People are obviously itching to get out. I think they're reaching for a sense of something resembling normalcy. So I just wanted to state publicly that the show must go on, and Pops in the Park will happen this Saturday from 5:30 till 7:00. And it's been broadcast on CAP Radio, KFBK, and in newspapers. So we're looking for a citywide party to celebrate just the fact that we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I know I've got one or two things to say myself. I want to add to Councilmember Hanson's thank you to the city team led by city manager Chan, our police chief, all of our city officials, working endless hours with little sleep to try and try and keep the peace. And this has been a very traumatic week for us, and we don't know what the next days will bring. I think it is important, as we all know, to not just think about getting through this. We certainly need to get through this from a pure public safety point of view. But the issues that are at hand here, not only in our community and in the country, are profound, and if we miss the moment to dig even deeper than we already have in our city, with each other, as leaders of this community, we will be making a mistake. To say may be the obvious, but it comes from my heart, it is-- It is time for even more compassion in our city and our country, and for those of us like myself who have never known poverty. If you've never known poverty, if you've not experienced depression or racism, imagine what the last months and years and entire life has been like for those who have suffered from systemic inequities, from persistent racism. Imagine now that you are one of the people that I described a moment ago, and that you're also out of work because of a pandemic that ravages through your community more than other communities because of persistent health inequity disparities. Now your frustration, your pain, and your desperation has deepened. I just hope that in this moment, and beyond this moment, when we look up and see the cold-blooded murder of George Floyd as vicious and hateful as a lynching, if we can muster, as a community, more than an ounce of empathy and more than a speck of understanding, we won't be surprised by the anger and the despair we now see around us. And we cannot delude ourselves that we can truly understand the pain and anguish that thousands of people are feeling. And of course, I've called for a curfew in the National Guard and have spoken with admiration and defense of our police department in terms of how they handle this. And both, in my view, we have to have the ability to hold on to seemingly contradictory truths at the same time that are not contradictory. So I just want to pledge to you tonight that just as we did after the Stephon Clark trauma, where we dug deep, we're going to have to dig even deeper here as a community. And in that light, one very specific ask that I have, not for the city manager, the city staff, but actually for community leadership, especially business community leadership. The destruction in our city was beyond belief. And I know that it disproportionately affected the downtown and midtown, though not exclusively. We have this COVID-19 funding where the city council voted last week to spend the first $10 million for small business assistance due to the coronavirus. And of course, the businesses that got hit downtown this week have been hit by a double whammy. And so naturally, and I've said this, I think it is appropriate to consider the businesses that if they're not properly insured or for whatever reason need immediate assistance to get back and help with repairing the physical destruction, that that ought to be some kind of priority. And I know that, and a meaningful priority, and I know that that is being considered and worked on by the city manager and the economic development team as they come back, I believe, next Tuesday with recommendations. But here's what I think is important to the community, especially the business community. I would appreciate it if between now and then that you would get together all of the bids, and the P-bids in the entire city, from the commercial corridors to the downtown, and you endeavor to draft either a common letter or a common resolution that gives us some advice and guidance about how we should expend that $10 million. Obviously, COVID is the filter and the only legal filter. But we now have this added trauma. And what I do not want is for the city council to have to sit and to weigh, well, not to weigh, but to have to get in between deserving constituencies based upon the geography and the socioeconomics of the city. I don't want, I want the P-bids and the commercial corridors and the ethnic chambers and the metro chamber to come together on this first $10 million and please write us, tell us together what your recommendations are for how to spend that money. Because that's building an inclusive economy. And that's creating, at least in one aspect, the kind of unity that we really need at this time in Sacramento.
Mayor, I just want to let you know, I did request such a letter that was inclusive of all the businesses that had direct damage, as well as what the needs are. It should be forthcoming soon. So I asked the P-bids and the chambers to coordinate that and to try to work together, and they are in the process of doing that.
Good, I'm glad, that's.
I just feel your thunder.
No, no thunder stolen, no pride of anything here. I just, I will be disappointed if I see separate letters from various parts of the city and different chambers that say you should essentially do more for us than for others. Get together, show strength, show that unity, and give us a recommendation. Ultimately, it's our decision, and we may choose, of course, to use our own independent judgment to modify or do what we think is in the best interest of the city. But that would be very powerful and very important.
Mayor, can I just offer a thought? I agree with you completely, but there are areas of the city that are not represented by bids or chambers. And a good example is Northgate. You did mention commercial corridors. What they have to represent themselves there is a neighborhood association, which is fairly strong. I just wanted to point out that there was damage along the Northgate corridor. And so I just wanted to put it out there that they won't be excluded in this process.
I'm really glad you said that, because you're right. Not everyone is represented. And so we'd ask all of the business and community leaders, because it's not just the business community, it's also our equity leadership, to be cognizant of those who don't have more organized or formal representation. And Northgate is a very good example of that.
Mayor? If I could just tag on to Councilmember Harris there. I had 22 businesses in North Natomas hit. Some are large, like Best Buy or Fries, but many, most, were small minority-owned or women-owned businesses in my district. And so they may be involved with a chamber, they may not be involved with a chamber. It'll take some effort to find out. So I would like to know who, if it's like Melissa Anguiano or who in the city is coordinating that effort so that we can direct them. Maybe they could work with the police department to identify what those businesses are and then talk to them directly. And some of the owners I know and have spoken with, but I'm not sure I know every one. So I just, I want to make sure they're included.
Of course. Is there anything else to come before the city council? If not?
Councilmember Warren has comments.
Councilmember Warren, I'm sorry, Alan.
I'll try to be brief, but I just want to say that, first of all, I want to just acknowledge the expressions that our council, particularly what I just heard from Councilman Hanson and Harris, and what I've heard from the mayor, and then also Mayor Pro Tim Ashby had contacted me multiple times regarding this recent issue around this tragic killing of Mr. Floyd. And obviously, Rick Jennings and Larry Carr and Eric Gare, you know, all of us are what's considered to be minorities. And so we experience life through a set of lenses that may differ from most other people. And, you know, I think it's really important that as a city, we can take some steps forward and really lead, as the city can, but to really lead in some very important areas. And I think economic development, employment opportunities, and really being a voice for just and justice, I think is very important. You know, I've been really, really, in some ways, comforted by the fact that I've received numerous calls, texts, emails from my non-African-American friends. Because it's going to take that. It's going to take us working together to really deal with the kinds of issues that have plagued this country since its founding. It's extremely important that we recognize that, and we all have a very, very important role to play. You know, during the COVID-19, there was, you know, these attacks on Asian people. And I'm sure, you know, our city manager, you know, had to be aware of that. And so, you know, there's these kinds of isolated attacks that rotate. And we have to be about dealing with injustice, these racial profiling, the types of things that identify select groups of people for things like sexual orientation, race, culture, religion. And we have to stand for justice and righteousness and rightness. And sometimes that's very uncomfortable, but I am moved by the fact that people across culture, across racial lines, across political lines, Republicans and Democrats and independents, and all in between, it is time for us to recognize that we have to solve these problems together. And it's going to take all of us to make this country the country that we all hope to live and flourish in. And if any of us get isolated, abused, or constantly are faced with injustices, your turn, it's just a matter of time before it rotates to another segment of society. And if you don't understand that, you know, it will never get weeded out. And so we have to be about that. And so I just want to thank this council, city manager, city attorney. You know, we have a unique body of people. This is a historic time, and I think we're well-positioned to help this city move forward. So I just want to thank all you guys, and I appreciate you. And I want to continue to try to do what we can to make this city a better place.
Thank you very much. On that note, everybody be safe. Sacramento be safe, and let's dig deeper to find justice. Thank you. Nothing further to come before the city council. We are adjourned.